Is this good to go?
Yep.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here, Heath Neameth, Director of Veterans Affairs, with two Board Members, Ken Melvin and Dan Benson. And we're seeking approval to be on the August 26 ballot for a renewal. We're not asking for an increase, nothing new, just the same mills we've been maintaining, .167, and that's been rolled back with heavily to .1588.
Any questions?
Full disclosure, I'm also on the Board.
Sometimes we don't throw that out there, Mark.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just one question. So, for the new person on the block here, this is the first time this has come through for us as well. Is this the only revenue that you get is through this millage? Or is there other revenue, state or federal or anything else that comes through?
No, we don't, we do not seek out any grants. When we first, when the millage first started, this state had a one-and-done grant. I came on as part-time. We weren't ready to hire full-time, so we, I applied for a state grant. It was $15,000. They said, "We don't care what you use it for, there's no deliverables." I said, "What happens when there's seven grand left?" She said, "Put it in your account and use it for computers." That has changed, so there really isn't anything out there where you're not giving up your freedom as a county office to maintain deliverables in answer to other state entities. So, we, and through programming, through our relief funds, we've been very fortunate to maintain a one-year millage in our fund balance. And as that, if for some reason that goes above that one-year millage mark, we start to do bigger programs, take veterans down to national cemeteries, nursing homes. We introduce things that normally you wouldn't be able to do.
In your millage, you can, you have staff and you do programs and stuff through that millage?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And we also received donations. Heath, this morning, had a veteran waiting for him in the parking lot out here this morning with $500 in gift cards. We have a donation fund. It doesn't come close to operating the department, but it allows us to have discretionary funds that we can use for anything, whereas the millage money has to directly benefit Roscommon County veterans only.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roscommon County Commission on Aging Budget, Tracy Baker, the Controller for the Roscommon County Commission on Aging.
Deb Looney, Roscommon County Commission on Aging Director.
Hi, Tracy Baker, the Controller for the Commission on Aging.
First of all, thank you for inviting us to come and present the wonderful work we're able to do for our community. First, I want to let you know that we have some really exciting news that's just happening right now. Our Serenity Day Lodge Administrator, Heather Delisle, has agreed to redevelop our CSA program, that's our Certified Senior Advisor. And what that means is, we are going to have an awesome resource person available to the community. Hands down, she's good, and our people deserve to have a place they can come and, you know, ask questions, be familiar with the people already, so they feel more comfortable. So, that's going on right now. Also going on this past month, we were able to finally hire five new employees. We have a part-time sub-driver. We have a dishwasher and a head cook for our Houghton Lake Center. We have a head cook for our Roscommon Center. And we have one in-home service provider, and we are interviewing another tomorrow. So, this is all great news. It's been a long road finding people, so we're really happy. Onto the things we were able to do this past year at our centers. First off, the Roscommon Center and our St. Helen's Center are both scheduled for next week to have new floors put in their kitchens. That's huge. For our health department, when they're coming in, we do not get dinged on them, but they're going to be beautiful, so we're really excited about that. And at those two centers, we've also had furnaces installed and hot water tanks. So, we're extremely happy. But the best news is, we had to have a couple additional electrical outlets put in because we're having on-demand hot water tanks put into the men's and the ladies' restrooms, and we will have hot water for the first time in 20 years that I've been here, in those restrooms at both facilities. So, that's huge. That's huge. In the winter here, it's so cold going in there, washing your hands and coming out, it's like, so really, that's huge. At our administration building, we were able to have some much-needed windows replaced, and we were able to work on the lights in our parking lot. So, that's all done. Onto our people, our numbers are steadily increasing, mostly now that we're going into the winter season. It's a lot easier for our people to come out and have meals at the centers in the summer, but those numbers continue to go up, which is awesome. That's good. So, our Meals on Wheels numbers are also up. We are closing the two centers next week for the floors to be replaced, but our kitchen staff are going to whatever center's open, and our drivers will still be delivering hot meals to our homebound congregate, have all been invited to come to one of the other two centers in their area for lunch. So, I feel confident that our people are still being taken care of. Hopefully, by the end of the month, and I don't mean hopefully, by the end of the month, we will be putting together two shelf-stable meals for every home-delivered client, along with two emergency frozen meals, because, yeah, it's November, but Michigan winters, we never know when they're going to hit. So, we're just trying to stay a little bit ahead of that. So, pretty much, that's it for what's, oh, oh, I know y'all know this, this is important. Sorry, I'm still excited. We were able to pay off the loan at the Houghton Lake Center early. So, we had a mortgage-burning celebration and everything, so that was huge. That was for the dining room, kitchen, and additional offices. And it came up to refinance, and our Board so graciously voted that, "Let's just pay it off." So, that was huge. That's it for me.
I distributed some packets to you. I'm just going to run through them quickly. You have a full list here of people, so I'm looking at fresh base on some key areas I want to talk about. The audit is there for you to review, his opinions. You're going to find a majority of his opinions toward the back of the audit. Moving on to our 2425 fiscal year, we, I also have a colored sheet in there for you. It kind of summarizes it. The detailed is also with it as well. So, I just want to bring to the attention of how much the millage means to our agency's ability to provide all of these services. It provided 66% of our total income for last fiscal year. Following it was the NMSCA funding that came in at 21%, and that also, I want to bring your attention to, that includes some ARP funds that were still available, and we were granted $74,896 of those dollars. So, that was a very nice surprise. And then our donations come in, in third place, at about 7%, and that includes any monies that come in from our center bingos. There's a gift shop that Houghton Lake has, and those funds come in through their community donations and then our program donations. So, any funds that come in between our in-home services and our Meals on Wheels. Our expenses, I did the same thing, highlighted three of those areas. Our personnel obviously takes up a good chunk of that, at 63%. Our meals is at 17%, and that meal cost actually includes the food, the Meals on Wheels containers, and the kitchen supplies, which is quite substantial when you break that down. Our utilities come in at 5%. So, that is kind of a summary there. If you need more detailed information or have questions, that expanded profit and loss is available, and I am always willing to answer any questions that anyone has. Just some numbers that I'd like to share with you. Our congregate meals totaled out at $27,776. There's a colorful little chart in there that will also give you some of that information that I'm so quickly going through. When I break down the meal cost for our congregates, we're at about $11.59 per meal. And I just want to bring your attention to, we are suggested donation for our seniors of $3.50, and then anyone under the age of 60 is a $6 charge. And that's, you have to pay that for that. So, that millage does cover those extra costs that we have. In our centers, we had a total of 964 people visiting all three centers throughout the course of this fiscal year. A majority of those were at the Houghton Lake Center with about 435, and under the age of 60, which is really a great number. And 15,657 meals were issued out of the Houghton Lake Center, 6,006 meals from Roscommon, and St. Helen did 6,113 meals. Our Meals on Wheels is averaging about $8.59 per meal. We delivered 64,819 meals to 352 people here in the county this last fiscal year. The breakdowns between those centers, Houghton Lake, we delivered 30,157 meals to approximately 162 people, 17,468 to 96 people, and 12,419 to 49 people. So, that is kind of the demographics for our area and our centers. Our overall meal cost, when you put it all together, we're at $9.49 a meal, which is pretty good. We've really tightened up our budget on that, and things are working really smoothly in that area. I don't have any concerns in those areas at all. Any questions for me on the 2425 budget? Okay. So, I also included our approved 2526 budget, and again, I'm just going to give you a nice rough rundown. Our income is budgeted at $2,393,000, with 72% of that coming from the millage funds. We did budget $1.65 million on that. It's really, you know, hard to get a good, you know, grip on that, so we kind of go by what it was last year. And our NMSCA funding is estimated only at $448,541, about 19% of our total funds. Obviously, right now, with the federal government shutdown, that is going to affect our funding with regard to any federal funds at all, and possibly some state funds are going to be trickling slower. So, we are very, very confident we're going to be okay. We did develop last year, or the year before, a what they called a budget stabilization account, where we have invested some funds into mercantile CDs. Those are held in this, out of the St. Helen location. So, that gives us about a one-month of operating funds, should something catastrophic happen, and we have no millage and we have nothing else. We do have enough for one month of operating to get us through. However, our overall assets, our cash assets, will get us through much longer than one month. So, we are comfortable that we will be financially stable throughout this next fiscal year. Our expenses are estimated at $2.2 million, with personnel taking up 68% of that cost, meals taking up 17%, and our utilities at 4%. So, it's relatively close to what our actual was for last year. And other than that, I think everything is going quite well financially. We have the funds to be able to do some building improvements, as Deb had elaborated on, which is really important for the comfort and welcoming feel when you come into our centers. So, we're really excited about all those improvements. Any questions? Any questions?
Full disclosure, I'm also on that Board, except for a group of people. Food yesterday was wonderful, so thank you.
Madam Chair, just a, yes. So, the new budget for 2526, because your fiscal year starts, it's October.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Personnel's obviously up. Is that, these new people that you've, are you finally hitting this budget versus last year's budget, or is there anything different that made that from 1.2 to 1.5?
Yes, there is a little difference in there. So, historically, going back just a few years, the agency was a little upside down with the finances, and we got that corrected and remedied, which is fantastic. But what we did was, we eliminated the compounding of the cost-of-living adjustments each year. And changes have been made here this year, that we went ahead and budgeted for a cost-of-living increase in there. What we did prior to, I'm sorry, I kind of skipped that part. What we did prior to is, at the end of the fiscal year, so long as we were on the plus end, you know, of our budget, we did well, we would do a cost-of-living adjustment to the employees, a percentage of whatever was decided upon, and it would go back to all of their hours, and it would add up, and they would get a check before the end of September for that cost-of-living adjustment. Some, we got some pushback from some of the community in that, they didn't feel comfortable with that, so respectfully, we decided to discontinue that. So, now, we're going to go with looking at putting in a cost-of-living adjustment into their wage versus giving it to them at the end of the year, and we'll see how that goes. I'm nervous, to be honest with you, because when property values go down, our millage goes down, and our funding goes down, and our wages are still at that level. And I don't want to see us back in that situation we were in before. So, yes, that number you see there does reflect a cost-of-living adjustment. It also includes additional employees that we can hire as well. And I think we have four additional employees we can hire in our providers area. We have, I believe, two positions that were budgeted for in our drivers. So, and I think we have one or two, two admin people in our, in there as well. So, we are okay to expand.
Some of these that you're finally getting to hire, are they in this group?
Yes, yes.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Morning.
Good morning.
Here to report to you on our activity with the ask what inmates, with housing them. The activity is through January 1st of this year through September 30th. Since then, we've housed 147 inmates from Oscoa County, 44 of them being females, 103 being males, which brings our average daily population to 15 inmates a day in that time period. Our lowest number has been nine inmates, and that was on July 1st and July 2nd, which was kind of surprising to see the low numbers at such a busy time of year. And our highest number was just recently, September 5th, with 23 inmates from Oscoa County. Since we've had them, January 1st through September 30th, our revenue off of commissary is $16,000, and that's profit, it's after everything's been paid for. That includes onsite commissary, as well as phone and our offsite commissary. The numbers that I provided you in your packet there shows our variable of $584,533. After figuring out what it actually costs to house an inmate, our total profit from Oscoa County is $51,322 and some change. During this time, we have not spent any overtime for any of our officers to transport, because Oscoa County does do all of our transporting. The only thing that we have done is emergency visits to the ER, which is pretty, it happens pretty quickly where we contact Oscoa County, and they're there to relieve one of our officers. Again, we're not calling in anyone for overtime to do this. For a total of what profit, what we've made since the first day of the year, roughly $67,000, to house in Oscoa County. Currently, we have 14 inmates from them right now. Want to have any questions? No? Cody?
Thank you for this. It is.
I love how you did the highlight of what the, you know, your variable costs can be.
This was a group effort.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Back to the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurers Report, Third Quarter 2025. Marcy Dinkler, the County Treasurer.
Good morning. I think everyone received in their packet the quarterly report for July through September. Just a couple of things I'd like to highlight on the cover page showing the bank accounts. The interest is holding steady for this third quarter, just hovering around 4%, maybe just a little over 4% through the Michigan class, where the majority of our funds are invested. We use Michigan class just because it's very liquid and easy to transfer in and out of that fund. There's no restriction as far as it's got to be in there for 30 days or anything like that, so we utilize Michigan class for a lot of our investing. You'll see also in September, if you look at the highlighted amount of $38,104,800 and some change, that is a significant increase from the prior month of August of about $11,000,000. That is largely due to the fact that we're collecting the county allocated millage and the state education tax on the summer tax bill, and we're getting those dispersments in from the local units. The state education tax is just an in and an out. We, the townships disperse it to the county, and then we in turn have to disperse it to the state of Michigan. But that increase is largely because of that money coming in heavily at that time. Once you review the, what's actually physically in the bank accounts, the supporting documents then from the general ledger come behind that by the month, and that shows a breakdown of what we show is in the general ledger versus any reconciling items. So, normally, every month, we have reconciling items with credit card transactions, meaning that the department has recorded that as income for that month, but we may not receive those funds until the following month, just a timing issue. So, you'll see that those adjustments come off of that, and then that highlighted amount there on the general ledger would match to the bank highlighted amount on the first sheet for each month. And that's how we tie out our funds between the banks and the general ledger. So, that's about it for the financial part. Just a little update from the Treasurer's Office itself. We're working heavily on the prior year foreclosures and excess proceeds funds, and we have deadlines that have recently come and gone with October being when everyone had to file a motion that had filed their notice of intent. So, we had about 47 notice of intents filed, but I think only 19 or 20 motions actually got filed off of those notice of intents. So, they no longer are able to, if they did not file their motion by October 1st, that time has sailed. However, they are also being noticed of the class action settlement that they are eligible for as well. So, all of the people that were noticed prior, that had excess proceeds between 2013 and 2020, have also been sent a notice about the class action, that they can join that settlement if they choose. The ones that had already filed their notice of intent, so those 50-ish, they had until October 31st to join the class, or they had to continue on with their current process under the current statute to 11708. So, we did not have anybody pull their motions that had filed motions by the October 31st. So, the 19 or 20 that filed the motions, those will be scheduled for a hearing with Circuit Court in November sometime, and then we will be able to issue settlement checks within 21 days after that hearing, based on what the judge rules in those cases, and who's eligible or not eligible for the excess proceeds. Working heavily on all of the special assessment districts. So, the Treasurer's Office does handle currently all of these special assessment districts, including the lake-level control structures for all three lakes, and the drain districts that are collecting special assessments also. All of those roles have been calculated and delivered to the local units, and we've entered all the splits and combinations that occurred for 2025, and we have got that going as well, and we continue to audit and bill for principal resident exemption denials also. So, staying very busy.
Yes. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Computer-aided dispatch, Jessica Gilbert, E911 Director.
You guys should all have a copy of the cost breakdown in your packet. So, for any of you that don't know, a reminder, the CAD project was started in 2023 with the Director prior to me, and the North CAD Group, basically, there's nine, nine different counties in the UP, two counties in the lower Upper Peninsula, teamed up with TSSI Consulting to replace our current CAD system that has reached its end of life. It was the original CAD system, purchased and dispatched, left the Sheriff's Office, so it's been there for a while. The technology is not there anymore. It's been sold three different times, three different CAD, it's just not good, it's not a good system. So, we made the choice to join up with this consulting firm to reach out to all the different CAD agencies that are available. They broke it down to Tyler. Tyler has came back with their final cost. The total project cost for all of the counties is the total annual cost over five years. They broke it down to a five-year payment plan, so that page is going to be the total cost for all of the agencies that are part of the group. The second page, where it says cost breakdown per PSAP, the group decided that it was fair to break it down according to the number of dispatch positions that each agency has. Each position basically has its own separate licensing fee, so we thought that that was the fairest way to do it, because not every dispatch center has the same amount of dispatch positions. So, Roscommon took a total of 19.23% of the total cost, and you'll see the five-year breakdown of the payment plans for Roscommon. This is something that we have been saving for, and we do have the funds for. So, these numbers were presented to my Authority Board yesterday. So these numbers were presented to my authority board yesterday and they approved the purchase of the project. The numbers include the software, hardware, installation and maintenance fees.
Is there a reason that year two is so much higher than the rest of the years? Is there a reason that they did that?
The year two, I believe, is what they consider our go-live, which is where they do a lot of our, like, monitoring of the system once it's, once we are operating off of the new system. So a lot of the maintenance fees and stuff like that will increase in that year two.
Okay. I just wondered why it was so much different. Yeah, exactly.
Do all have the same go-live date? Are they going to transition how this gets implemented?
They'll break it up into separate dates so that they can.
Go with one group first and go to the next?
Yep.
Do you have any idea of who's going first?
No. We, we will keep our current CAD in place until we know that this one is operating.
Any questions? Thank you. Brownfield Committee appointments. Brenda Bachelder, Director of Economic.
Good morning, Brenda Bachelder, Director of Business and Economic Development. We come before the Board of Commissioners today to fill the partial term. I believe it would be expiring on October 31st of 2027, assuming the former treasurer's role, Rebecca Reagan. Unfortunately, we had just some paperwork misplaced and our, our, our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority did approve Marcy to make that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners earlier this year, so.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Head into her plane. Marcy.
Review of the personnel manual, discussion of the whole. Commissioner Wolfson?
Yeah, the personnel manual probably needs updating. But I had a discussion with a controller and she felt we're going to have to have an attorney review it because it's, you know, a lot of labor stuff in it. And I don't know, do we move forward this year? Is it in the budget?
So we do not have it in the budget this year. The last quote that I received was from our same organization, Keller Toma that we use, and looking at the extent of it and then incorporating obviously any co-employer manuals, labor union agreements, we'd be looking at anywhere from about $8,000 to $10,000 total. So that would be something that I would need to ask for to be in the 2026 budget to start working on that project for. I think it's pretty important, get that up to date and get that finalized. And we should have the ability to utilize, not knowing exactly where your projects are under sheriff, but they have a software through the sheriff's department and 911 that has been acquired that they've begun using that allows them to build basic policies. So we could actually use some of those basic policies for the updates on Family Medical Leave Act, those types of like statutory ones that would save us costs as far as having to have an attorney write them or they just basically make sure the language is correct in case they have to represent us, so.
My question is, we're operating on a noted one. And how does that affect our employees?
I guess it depends on what department you're in. So our personnel manual as it stands right now has always been a very loose document. It covers more in the way of benefits and sick time, those types of policies as it rolls through. It is less on the way of discipline because we have so many interchanging documents that are in that co-employment status. For instance, court employees are actually court employees. They're not county employees. So A doesn't necessarily have anything to do with, with B. So for the general gist, it's not a huge, it's not a huge deal because there's nothing in there that's airtight. There's nothing that is, I mean, you can't steal, you can't lie, you can't hit people type of things are generalized in there. But it is out of date, needs to be inclusive of more language related to labor laws. And that's the biggest area of concern for me.
So, so this manual is more or less for an employee knowledge?
It is for employee knowledge and then it would be for generalized, generalized usage throughout the county. The way it's always been explained to me is the county policy is, is an umbrella policy. And everybody else then has their own specifics that can come off, very similar to like federal, state, local government as it goes down. So that's kind of our generalized umbrella policy. And then the other ones build and intertwine based on that.
So at this point, we're just not going to do anything with the personnel policy until we can budget for it?
I would like to add into a line item in my budget this year for 2026's budget. I have not built that in yet. I wanted to talk about this first, so.
Madam Chair, I would, I would agree, especially so we haven't solidified that budget yet and there's a lot of requests for additional. So if it's something we need, let's see where it fits in this year's budget. I'm okay with that as well. The second question is, so some of the other departments, like you said, courts are not our employees. So when they do their policy manuals, do they need somebody to review those as well? Or is that not needed for them? Or is it, do all groups need that?
So they are, they are blessed a little bit better than I and I don't know that I have anybody in here. They have the State Court Administrator's Office that has a department that oversees and overlines all of that. And traditionally what they do is they use those general policies of ours, copy and paste and then include their own court rules as applicable or any court specific.
They're just going more specific to what the general state requirements or labor laws would say. They're just going to add some details to that. Is that correct? Okay. Thanks.
I would say that I agreed to have her put in a line item for the 2026 and get it updated. Because I know a lot has changed as far as labor laws and things like that just in the past year, so.
Well, I think the labor laws apply whether or not our policy.
Well, they do, but.
We just want to make sure we all have them clearly outlined and aware of them.
It just puts everything in black and white for everybody to see.
Next, we have sick time incentive policy. Jody Valentino, our administrator controller.
So I put together yesterday a very long memo for you that I will do my very best to summarize. The general, general finding as a result of a request during one of our closed negotiation sessions resulted in myself and Noel needing to do some research in regards to cash out policies for paid time off. In reviewing that, we discovered that the Internal Revenue Service, in all of their forthright wisdom, has a doctrine called the constructive receipt doctrine. And essentially what that means is if I provide, if I'm provided as an employee the option of cashing out a portion of my paid time off, whether I choose to cash it out or not that year, I am to be taxed on what I've accrued for the year, whether I cash it out or not. So if I accrue 100 hours, whether I cash it out, as long as I have the option, that has to be included on your W-2 as gross income. That being said, that's not a practice that we have done. It was not something we were aware of. We talked to our labor attorney and then we had a good, at least hour conversation with our auditor, Noel and I did. And he confirmed that, yes, our understanding is absolutely correct. And of the, the various policies that are in existence throughout the county, some represented in union manuals and then our sick, sick time incentive attendance policy. The only one that is currently compliant as far as not having to be under this constructive receipt of income is our 911. And that is because they elect to cash out in 20, this year, calendar year, for cash out in the next calendar year. That being said, because we are aware currently that there is a requirement to update this information on the W-2 for the sick policy for any and everybody that would cash out this year. We have already requested to the unions of how they would like to proceed forward. Do they want to do their cash out and then have that accrual included on their W-2? Do they want to skip the cash out? Do they want to elect to this year for cash out next year? Those, those options for this year. And we are working on needing to make a final decision through the board as far as what we will do for our non-union employees. When I sent this out late yesterday to the department heads, I've already had four department heads respond back to me. The best options for coming to compliance and still being able to offer this as a incentive is the Board of Commissioners could mandate that each employee has no option to reject the cash out. So you could say every year, everybody has to, that has 200 or more has to cash out at least 40 hours. It's a mandate, can't be taken back because there's no choice. That's why it complies. The other portion, which is the four that have responded to me have said that they have a preference for, is the employee does an irrevocable election to cash out their sick time by December 31st for the following year. So you would say in November, I know that I have a balance of very, it could be exactly what the 911 policy is. November 30th, I know I have 300 hours. I can comply with a minimum 260, so I'd like to cash out 40 on my first January paycheck. Totally in compliance, totally okay to do. That's my recommendation. I know that Noel also supports. I, please, I will tell you in spending our time on the telephone with Tyler Waters, our auditor, the process that we would need to put into place to track usage accrual and then incorporate this into W-2 is not something that we have in our current capabilities for our programming and our payroll software system. It would have to be completely created by us. And Noel will cry a lot. And I will too. And I can't guarantee you that, you know, it would be audited annually and there may have to be adjustments that come as they go. That the other portion of that of using that on a W-2 is, like, I gave a very brief example. An employee that makes $18 an hour who has accrued a full year of sick leave, they would basically have another $1,962 of gross income show up. So we could jump them into another tax bracket easily and affect, and affect their livelihood by doing that. And I, I think most people would prefer not to have that happen. So we were looking for the best option. Ideally, what I would like to be able to do is have all that department head input. I'm sure after this meeting I'll get lots of comments. Get that department head input and then be able to let you know what the overall preference is by the next regular, regularly scheduled November meeting. Maybe put it on for discussion and then day approval for that because we're getting close to that time. If that's okay.
So we already have four who've responded already? And they're kind of more in line with that option too?
Yes.
Okay.
Nobody, I don't think anybody wants to see the employees not get it as an option, so. And I will tell you what's really interesting because as we've been reviewing stacks of neighboring contracts, we have found that everybody does this in a, in a different fashion. And Noel and I would be like, huh, I wonder why they do that. So then we looked it up and we were like, oh, that's why they do that now. So now we understand.
So this is not a new doctrine? That our auditor now, after it being brought up, said, oh, yeah.
This is.
Is that something they look at?
This is not something that, I can tell you this is something he will look at at other places he audits now for compliance. So I'm sure we'll make friends. But I think this is one of these things in talking to a county that had a plan that I have always was really curious how they came about it. They ran into this about six or seven years ago in a very similar situation, doing some research, finding out they were limited and then changed their policy. I think everybody keeps it a secret because it's one of those, if you don't know about it, you don't do anything. But now we know.
So the IRS is going to count this as income?
Yes, sir.
Are we responsible for 7.5% FICA?
Yes, sir.
Regardless of how they take it?
Yes, sir. And again, when they cash it out?
If we don't do something different?
Correct. And again.
Sorry, could you say that again?
And workers' comp?
No, that is a different benefit, so that one would not. It would be any cash out of sick time vacation, any paid time off like that.
Any other questions? Okay. With no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned and our next meeting starts at 10 o'clock. Number 5th at 10 a.m. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Morley?
Here.
Milburn?
Here.
Russo?
Here.
Wolfson?
Here.
Approval of the agenda, before we approve the agenda, on motion number four, in the title of the resolution, we need to add, where it says Chairperson Darlene Censor to sign, the word airport should be put in there.
Someone with addition, Madam Chair?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call? Wolfson? Morley?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda included our meeting minutes from October 22nd, board meeting and the October 22nd budget and finance meeting. Class As in the amount of $664,240.01 and claims and accounts in the amount of $6,888,609.01. Correspondence, letters regarding Higgins Lake Advisory Committee, Lee-Linol and Grand Traverse Counties resolutions, MAC legislative updates and grant funding opportunities from MDNR, the monthly department report, the EDC director report for October. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? Do we have a second? Okay, roll call? Milburn?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Wolfson? Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for agenda items? Visitors, do we have any visitors? Unfinished business, lake level control structure updates. For Holton Lake, there's not really a lot to report. Prine Anuhoff is still working on the design phase and will be updating us once they are ready for the next steps. Commissioner Wolfson, would you like to report on St. Helen?
We're setting up a meeting with Luke O'Brien. I believe it's going to be November 14th to discuss that. I think probably what we're going to wind up discussing is getting rid of the winter level on Lake St. Helen so we can have a spillway versus like a dam with gates because it'll just automatically maintain a summer level then.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to talk about board input on the design of Holton Lake's dam. Because I'd like to have some suggestions on that design. One being if we're going to go to hydraulic gates, we have to have a control building for that. And also we have to have a secure way to monitor the lake. My idea would be to put a control building in the structure itself, on the structure, but locked so that access is not for the public rather than have a separate building for the control building. I think we need to have that discussion with, with the design of the. But I think we need to have that discussion with, with the design of the structure.
Okay.
So I'd like to see a physical scale that tells us the lake level at that point. Because if something goes awry with your, our information getting the lake level, you can physically go there and read it on the gauge and do what you need to do to adjust.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Question. So are those the things, are those recommendations, do those go before that specific lake level committee to review and look at? Is that the process that's followed?
No, it's more or less in how they design the structure. I mean, we already know that there's going to have to be some control place for the hydraulics.
Right.
So it's just a matter of where are you going to put it? Separate building or, or on the structure? It doesn't need to be very big. And then also the gauge, that's, I think they're already planning on that, but I'm not certain.
We just need to talk with Prime Nuhoff.
Sure, it's, you know-
I just didn't know, especially as we start to form the Higgins group, at what point do they continue to get input and what point do they not? So that I'm-
Some of this has already been discussed with the advisory-
Committee?
Committee, when we talked about the actual design phase.
Okay.
Because the committee had come up with, they do want public access on the Holton Lake site. They want it to be nice. And the advisory committee's recommendation was make it, make it a nice one, something they can be proud of.
Yeah. It's going to be around forever.
Yep. For Higgins Lake, I did speak with Chase last night, after the whole permit information, which I kind of reported on before. He has now submitted everything and the permit is basically placed on hold, meaning that they're reviewing the permit application. So hopeful that we'll hear back here soon on whether or not they're going to allow that permit.
Yeah.
The other thing is that the lake manager has asked that the Board of Commissioners make a decision on the water budget, on whether to move forward with that. I don't know if we need a vote or we just need a consensus on whether or not we want to move forward. I did talk to Prime Nuhoff, because that wasn't something that was budgeted in, but they did state that they could wait till after the first of the year before, once everything has been completed and then bill. So-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think if we're going to spend money and put it on an SAD, we need to take a vote on it.
Yes.
I would agree.
Must be a vote.
So we would have a vote in, on our next meeting, done. I know the advisory committee applications time period was closed out. Commissioner Wolfson, Chase and myself are going to get together and review those. Chase has been out of town, so therefore we have not been able to do so. I think we're talking a day next week. Chase said he was available any day but Monday, so-
I believe we had about five new applicants.
Five new.
And none of the township boards have responded to me yet, but, you know, they may not have had their meeting yet.
Yeah.
And I believe Darlene has gotten response from all the associations?
Yep. The Higgins Lake Property Owners Association has appointed Mr. CMAC. Higgins Lake Conservancy has appointed Mr. Carey, and the Higgins Lake Foundation has appointed Nancy Lamb. So-
Just a quick update, I did hear from the Beaver Creek Township, she has been out sick for about a week or two. So might be something as a follow-up. I don't know if that's because of their board meeting. I just know, I heard from one of the residents there, she's been out sick, so-
I sent an email out to their clerk.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah, a couple weeks ago.
Right.
And I still haven't heard anything, but, you know, you got to assume that maybe they haven't had a meeting yet.
Right, yeah. Just thought I'd share that in case that helped you try to get information.
And I know our next topic under unfinished business is Hi-Fi, so we can cover anything with Hi-Fi and Higgins Lake under that, if everybody's okay with that.
I, since we're talking about Hi-Fi, can we look at USGS for the Holton Lake Control Structure again versus Hi-Fi?
I feel that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I feel that we should go back to USGS on all the lakes.
I agree 100%.
I mean, we do have it now on Higgins Lake. Thank goodness, because the Hi-Fi units just not working right.
I would agree with Commissioner Wolfson and Russo. As wonderful as Hi-Fi sounded, I have been back and forth with them, I can't even tell you how many times, and things are still not resolved. And I don't understand why or where the ball is being dropped and-
You know, we had-
It's not fair to the people that want to track the lake levels. And USGS has been true, so, and that seems to be the most reliable at this point, and I think that we owe it to those people to have a reliable reading.
It's like having two watches, which one's right?
Yeah. And-
And it makes me question, if we've had this many issues on Higgins Lake, are the readings on Holton Lake and Lake St. Helen correct?
That's where I'm beginning, I think there, they may not be.
The initial concept was redundancy was good, but this, this has not proved to be the concept, so I think we should go back to USGS.
Do you know when our contracts are expired?
I think in March, don't think. The idea was good in the start.
The idea was good.
Our idea was to make it more user-friendly for everybody, which was a good idea, but it's just not working out. And it appears like there's been some personnel change at the Hi-Fi level, and now we're having difficulties. If we go USGS, that's a government agency, it'll always be there. So-
Madam Chair, if I understand correctly as well, that's the one that we have so much historical data on.
Yes.
Like that's been the one that has been the most reliable. We have a lot of data, and the comparisons have been a challenge as, as we've added Hi-Fi. So, yeah, I would, needs to be simple for all of us to manage, as well as the people to be able to make sure that we're trying our best to manage those lake levels.
Yeah, you're correct. The trust factor is now deteriorating with Hi-Fi.
Is that something, we don't have to wait to March to switch?
No.
No, I-
We can put USGS on anytime we want.
Okay.
It's just, at the, at March, Hi-Fi's contract ends.
Okay. I'm just really concerned about Holton Lake at this point.
And it'd be nice to have some overlap time to compare.
Right.
To see if Holton Lake and Lake St. Helen have that.
Did this morning, I compared Higgins Lake Hi-Fi with USGS, and I found the Higgins Lake Hi-Fi is off still. You know, so-
Jody, how would we go about getting USGS back on the other two?
So because the state keeps billing us anyhow, it should be pretty easy. We don't pay yet, just so you know, except for Higgins Lake. But, so I can reach out to the gentleman from USGS, and if you're okay, I can copy Commissioner Wolfson on it and let them know that we would like to enter back into that, and then they will communicate directly with the state of Michigan to get those updated and back online.
Okay.
And then put back into action, and then we'll just have to update the website.
Okay.
Because I believe all equipment's still there for Holton Lake.
I believe that all of the equipment is still there as well, but they, it may need to be updated, just depending on-
Well, do they not keep compiling that data? Because they didn't put them in just for Roscommon County, did they?
My understanding is that they have not been online and measuring, because we have not been paying for it. I don't know that for certain, though. That's, maybe the state was paying for it, for their own records, but-
Madam Chair, just, I think one of the questions really is around the contract, right? If it expires in March, are there any clauses in that or penalties if we cancel them early?
They've already been paid.
All the way through March? Okay. Do we have to give them any 30-day notice or anything like that before we do just say no?
Mm-hmm. You just don't update, you don't, just don't renew the contract?
I don't know that for sure, but if we have to, we will do that.
I think it would be prudent for us to-
Just let them know.
It's, it's the right thing to do, to let them know.
And would be to cancel that, to not renew our contract?
Mark is right, we should be polite and let them know our intention.
Okay. Yep.
It's a professional polite thing to do.
And I think we're in with Brandon, who's the owner, basically, of it, that we can let him know. So-
Send that letter out as soon as we possible.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to point out that Prime Nuhoff has two gauges on the river for their use in compiling information. Those would most likely stay.
Yes. Because they just renewed.
Yeah. And, and we deduct that from their bill, the cost.
Enhanced access to public record policy. Commissioner Wolfson?
As we talked about at the last meeting, that there's really no need for this policy. And my suggestion would be that we just take it out of our policy book.
Should we vote on that?
Um.
Or just, okay.
Done, heard.
Okay. So in our next meeting. And D, optional health insurance buy-up plans. So we have all been given the optional buy-up plans. And basically, what Jody needs to know is whether the board is okay. We don't have to make any other decisions, but if it's okay, if we're okay with her this, these plans. The base plan and then the additional two buy-up plans with the additional dental for the orthodontics.
You don't even have to vote on the dental today. That'll be next time, we'll talk about that. So essentially, what we have is Blue, Blue Cross Blue Shields has a drop dead, no change. You must sign the contract to agree to these plans by November 15th. So all we have to do is tell them which plan options they are. So at this point, it is not a decision by the board if you are going to fully fund. It is not a decision by the board if you are going to do 5%. You don't need to make that final in here. It's just adopting these plans so that those contracts can start, and then they can start building those programs out for us in open enrollment. And then in the next meeting, we have that discussion.
About the financials.
Yep.
So do we need a motion to do such at this time?
I am, I am good with her moving forward on these and the buy-up plan.
I don't see it in my motion.
It's not in the motion. So just basically, back motion four.
Oh.
With the big chart. I got the chart.
I see it now.
Oh, it's pretty small, because you don't need to-
I just looked at the chart. Okay. So, all right. New business. Personnel labor relations update pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection C of the Open Meetings Act, the Roscommon County Personnel and Labor Committee is requesting a closed session to discuss strategy and negotiations sessions with the full Board of Commissioners in connection with the current negotiation of the four collective bargaining agreements. Do I have a motion for us to enter into closed session?
So will.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so we have to clear the room.
May I have permission for Sheriff and our 911 Director to stay as well?
Yes. Yes, please, stay.
Our clerk is ready.
Number one, move to reappoint Michael Briggs to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board for a three-year term beginning November 1, 2025 through October 31, 2028.
The move.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number two, move to reappoint Wendy DeRocher to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board for a three-year term beginning November 1, 2025 through October 31, 2028.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number three, move to approve M.D. Contract Number 2026-0031, federal project number 3-26-0046-24425, authorizing airport manager Eric DeRoches to proceed with airport taxi lane construction as outlined in the sponsor contract. Zero count, $0 county share match is included in the 2025 airport budget.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number four, move to adopt resolution number 2025-11-01, authorizing Chairperson Darlene Censor to sign airport sponsor contract on behalf of Roscommon County Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Roscommon County Blodget Memorial Airport enters into contracts, grants, and certifications through federal and state programs. And whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners elected Darlene Censor to serve as chairperson for fiscal years 2025 and 2026. And whereas it is the desire of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners to grant Chairperson Censor the authority to execute airport sponsor contracts between Roscommon County Blodget Memorial Airport and the State of Michigan Department of Transportation Office of Aeronautics as approved by the board. And whereas the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners does agree that if the designated signer changes, Roscommon County and/or Roscommon County Blodget Memorial Airport will contact the State of Michigan Department of Transportation Office of Aeronautics with the changes. Therefore, be it resolved that Darlene Censor of the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners' Chairperson be authorized and directed to execute airport sponsor contracts with the State of Michigan Department of Transportation Office of Aeronautics on behalf of the Roscommon County Blodget Memorial Airport.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Number five, move to approve the following health benefit plans for plan year 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Committee reports. Commissioner Morley.
All right. For October 22nd, Central Michigan District Health Department had one of their large meetings this, this month, I guess. So it was, I thought it was interesting that their, Dr. Morris, she always does a physician report. There's a new world screw worm issue that is going around, not necessarily here, but it, they actually eat human flesh as well. And it came into our country because somebody went to El Salvador and came back and had it. So I'm like, oh, throwing that one out there for, this is your tidbit of information for the month. Then the health officer, Steve Hall, did a report. They got a $10,000 grant from the Clare County Foundation to help with some prescriptions for kids. They are working towards on their MERS piece that they could hire back in the defined benefits if they were internal. So there's some changes going on, on how they will, if you're an internal person, you can come back in at a different thing and keep your current plan. If not, you have to go to MERS, something like that. So that was a big discussion. They did a special recognition awards for their entire district, and there were 156 people there that work in the Central Michigan-
And there were 156 people there that work in the Central Michigan District Health Department. They gave out 34 awards and one special one by a gentleman by the name of Norm Kohn. You probably know him, Commissioner Milburn, because you've been around. He has been in public health for 56 years and 24 of those was right there with Central Michigan District Health Department. So big kudos to somebody who's worked in our area for so long. October 24th, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Personnel Committee met up in Traverse City focusing on their employee culture survey, which has not been done in a long time. The new CEO is Linda Zeller, very well qualified for this new position, very well connected to policy and legislators in our state that impact what happens there. Most of this conversation was really around their benefits are struggling as well. They are moving towards the same broker that we use and has been very, very helpful for them in this transition. The piece that I felt was really important is they were looking at what, because pay has been bad, they've laid off over 20 people. Benefits are not helping right now. And so they had a lot of conversation around doing things better to help the people feel good that are still there. And I thought it was an interesting conversation from the head of HR to say, I have to tell you, the more notes you write and the more pat on the back saying, good job, just isn't cutting it today. They feel very down already. So what can we do? And so the CEO, not only doing some things like that where she's out more with the people, doing some town halls, but also to think about. They played around with a bunch of different ideas on benefits, health savings accounts, what they haven't really worked that, that very well to save, but also give back. So she's trying to come up with some things from a benefits perspective and tangible things for them that might make them feel better during this really tough transition time, so. With emergency management, on Monday, the 27th and Friday, the 31st, I have to give our Director of Emergency Management, Vanessa, some kudos. When the SNAP program became, you know, going out the door, she immediately picked up the phone and said, what can we do? How do we do that? There is a correlation between SNAP and the fact that that is not necessarily considered, you know, a fire, a tornado, ice storm, but it is something that impacts our group. So she really wanted to see what we could do. Kudos to her, she pulled together probably 15 different stakeholders and they met the following Monday. They all participated and that conversations continue. So hopefully, if by chance the government comes back and SNAP returns, that we have a model that we could share if something like this happens in the future. We've already got an infrastructure built, we've got a process built. But we are still working on ways that we can help those people in our county that aren't getting those SNAP cards or money and to say, where can we help you go? And that, the biggest take from that was really about, we need to build, or from the group, we need to build our infrastructure. The infrastructure has got to be better to support that, from food pantries, baby pantries, all the groups that touch, even our schools and the things that they do, and not duplicate resources and money. So I think it's just been a great, even if the government comes back open and it's not been a big thing, I think it's an exercise that will serve us better in the future. So kudos to her for that. Other than that, it really is around budget reviews, couple days, the third and the fourth of that. And I was also talking with the village about their housing projects and how that relates to our economic development with Brenda. And then found out that we have, is it Hannah Lou, Hannah? Hannah Lord? So I was able to have a conversation with her and understand what that role, her joint role is between Crawford and us and how she helps with the people who need physical changes to their home, whether it's repairs and stuff and how that money comes in as a loan and gets paid. So I don't know if there's a huge correlation between the two, but they wanted to see if there was any way that they could have a conversation and, and think about moving forward and how can we benefit? So that's my report.
Okay, Commissioner Milburn.
Just a little levity, I was in Egypt, not El Salvador, so I didn't bring back the man anymore. I met with Rebecca Yunker at the Child Assessment Center last month. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Russo.
Uh, just budget and union, that's it.
I had our agenda meeting, I also had a substance use disorder meeting on Monday. There were no new requests for Roscommon County. However, I did learn that one of the prior requests that was approved, the counselor that goes into the jail has not been doing so, so I have reached out to them to get clarification and talk about what is next. Because if we've already paid those funds, then some of those funds need to come back. I had meetings with the bargaining units, with labor negotiations, multiple budget meetings that took place on Monday and Tuesday. And we still have a couple, I think, left to do. One of them's animal control and shelter and maybe buildings and grounds. And, um, that's it.
Mark and I met with Rebecca at the Child Assessment Center to talk about the multi-county agreement for our opioid money being put to use there. Rebecca was gonna contact the county, all the counties, I think there's six of them. And if they were interested, then we'd put together the program and I'd present it to the boards at each of the counties and see what we can put together on that. Materials management. This really didn't have anything to do with materials management, but through my Eagle contact, I found that there's a grant for recyclables. It's a match grant. And I made sure that Denton Township and Richfield Township got copies of that grant so that they could pursue it if they found a need for it. That's it.
Eric, can I have a question, a follow-up? So would that be beneficial for any of the other townships?
Yes. Any township can, can apply for this. Any agency cap.
Okay. If you want, if you'll forward that to me, I'll get them, or you can send them to the, at least the two townships for, it doesn't matter either way.
Okay.
That would be helpful for all of them, then. You want to send it to me and I'll send it?
I'll send it to you.
Okay. Thanks.
Public comment, do we have any public comment? Come on up.
Nasa Varner, Roscommon County Emergency Management Director, wanted to let you all know that as of yesterday, we've been approved to receive up to $50,000 to do a community wildfire defense, our community wildfire protection plan rewrite through the Michigan DNR. We had applied for the community wildfire defense grant and were denied. However, they were impressed with our application at the DNR and decided to give us funds through them, so. Paul Rogers yesterday told us that we've received that funding, so.
Awesome.
But I would let you guys know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment? Okay.
I think you should go set up the table and state your name and address.
Michelle Stevenson, County Clerk. So I just wanted to quickly review, we had an election yesterday. So the three items that were being voted on, Roscommon Township had a fire equipment renewal millage that did pass 587 to 250. Holt Lake Community Schools had an operating millage proposal that passed 1,670 to 1,632. And there was a recall election for the position of the village president. And Michael Miller was voted to, for that partial term with 96 votes to Tony Medina's 76 votes. We will have the canvas begin this afternoon at 2 o'clock. We will not be able to certify the election because there are three signature cures still out there, so we have to wait until after Friday before we can certify the election. That would be an absent voters ballot, there's some kind of an issue with the signature on the, the return envelope.
Any other public comment? Board comment. Commissioner Morley.
I don't, I don't have as much, especially since we've been spending time with negotiations and things like that and budget review. But I did notice in the EDC report from Brenda, the Development Resource Event that they're gonna host in February 5th. So really, community leaders, the local municipalities, builders, to really see what they can do to help grow. Part of that's housing business and that piece, so I thought that was pretty cool. I won't be in town at that point, but it might be a nice, easy to attend. And I'd just like to maybe put it out to see if somewhere on our work sessions before we start the new year, to take a look at our strategic plan again, what we've accomplished, what we need to table, what we might want to start thinking about what we want to focus on for 2026, so. If we can do that.
Okay, Commissioner Milburn.
Nothing at this time, Madam Chair.
And Commissioner Russo. I would assume. That I don't know yet, I haven't, I haven't heard anything yet on it.
I'm all for it.
Okay. Commissioner Wolfson. I just want to thank all the department heads for working hard regarding the budget information and coming and providing that to all of us that were able to make those meetings. And just urge any commissioner that if they have questions to either reach out to Jody or the department head for clarification. That way, when things are presented, we're ready to discuss any final things and make our decisions. Okay. With no further board comment, this meeting is adjourned and our next meeting will start at 12:10. Roll call, please.
Russo. Morley.
Here.
Wilson. Milburn.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Approval of the agenda, before we approve the agenda under new business, instead of it reading Roscommon County 2025 Budget Review, it's actually supposed to be the 2026 Budget Review.
So move with correction, Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolfson. Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public comment on agenda items only, any public comment? Okay. Yeah, they can, yeah. Yep. Unfinished business, we don't have anything, so we're on to new business, the 2026 Budget Review.
So I, we had the Friday that got rescheduled because I wasn't here because I was sick on Thursday. There were actually only a couple of departments that have not been met with individually by two, two of you to date. I appreciate you being flexible in your schedules. So we'll get those ones covered up. One of them is Buildings and Grounds, and that is, I want to sit down with Justin because he is brand new. The budget in and of itself is not a familiar thing for him, for the county, but I feel like he has had enough time to, or he feels he's had enough time to say, hey, these are some things that we want to make sure are covered in there. That I could see potentially, because he's got enough of that years of experience to, to weigh in on costs. So from my standpoint, that's where we are. Basic update, all of the department information has been provided, has been inputted, it's into the computer. I've started looking at it from my controller standpoint as I've been sitting in on the meetings with the department heads and the two representatives from the Board of Commissioners. I will just give you just kind of a quick, Commissioner, Commissioner Wolfson said, you know, are you gonna have paperwork for me? And I said, I'm gonna be honest, at this point with some, some questions out there, I don't have anything. I think that Commissioner Morley, I gave her a copy of the department requested, we've been kind of trying to go through a little bit at a time for some of the areas that she hasn't had an opportunity to delve into yet. But knowing that there are some small questions out there and some larger questions with the union negotiations, I'm not confident in saying this is how much money we have left or should be allocating or could be allocating. I will tell you everything looks favorable. And here's the general gist of where we're at as of today. So the 2026 General Fund budget highlights that are based on those department requested budgets that you have either seen or that have been sent in. They include our current BCN, HMO, HSA health plan with the appropriate increase and fully funded deductibles. So fully funding the HSA deductible portion of that. So that's all inclusive in all funds and departments. It also includes the recommendation of the Wage and Salary Committee for a 4% adjustment to the wage scales for steps one through six and then a 3% cost of living across the board. That is the, I think I said it earlier today, that's the other half of the Band-Aid. Last year, we pulled the first part, this year, we're yanking the rest of it off. We are equating the, the benefit package and the wages together. I did give to you a finalization of what that looks like to compare our 2026 to a 2025 with raises and steps that are in there. And as we, and as we finalize this, when I get the whole budget presentation together for you, for the formal presentation, once it's finalized, I will make sure that I have a list of, you know, number of departments, steps, et cetera, for you included in that as well, so. So this also, the budget also includes what I'm gonna call best estimates of where our labor contract final figures could end up. That obviously is one of those gray areas in there, it's one of the ones that because we negotiate in, in close meetings is a major reason there's nothing posted up and on the board. But putting in those best estimates gives me a really good idea of feeling supporting to tell you guys that, hey, if something were a worst-case scenario to happen, is there wiggle room left in this budget? And as of right now, I'm pretty confident that there are. So we are at, for current revenue based on all of that information, 12 million, this is general fund, which is the big important one, And that is a 5.8% increase over 2025's budget. And then our current expenses for the general fund are 11,807,294.60. And that is actually a 4.41% increase in expenses. It's fairly comparable to the increase we made last year as well. So, that being said, the question everybody always wants to know was what about our fund balance? And as we are heading into the end of 2025, based on the information we looked over at the last committee of the whole meeting for Budget and Finance, we are looking at being right at around 20%. That would equate to a little more than 19% based on our beginning expenses, if this is the final budgeted general fund expenses that we end up with. But why do we have more revenue? Several reasons. Our ad valorem tax increase was $268,000, our collected portion of that. So we did see that ad valorem tax increase. It's not nearly as big as how it sounds when you tell people how much the actual tax valuation across the county, but remember, we're rolled back and then we're, we're limited. Our jail operations for the collections of revenues due to the Escota County inmates, based on information Lieutenant Beck provided and our federal inmates, is estimated to bring in about another 189,000. We have seen an increase in fees for GIS services, that's about 19,000, that'll be budgeted in. Our soil erosion permits and fees. Our soil erosion permits and fees, about another 12,000. And then some of the areas that are actually not increases in revenues, they're actually reductions in how much money people are asking us for. Our childcare fund, which has decreased every year by about 100,000, is again asking for another decrease of 80,520. And that is a direct result over that at-home care that we're getting a higher reimbursement rate for. Front of the Court, which had a larger, roughly $170,000 request for this budget, is requesting an allocation less than that by $35,000. They, their revenue steps for collections to offset in their fund are, their efforts are showing, I guess, would be what I would say, and the staff is working really well together. Currently, the reduction of the allocation to our airport from 2025 to 2026 is roughly $30,000. There's a little bit of a question mark on that. We still have some work to do on that budget. And then just in general, the, the choices made to change the insurances, liability insurance is about 24,000. So across the board, there's some really good items in there that are sustainable. I firmly believe that we are not going to see any huge jumps in taxes in the rest of our lifetime. This is a small steady growth, so it's not something we can always count on. But looking at things that are not currently included in the budget that have been brought out either to me or during the department head meetings in regards to the budget, funding requests for MSUE that is not currently included in those expenses. Additionally, EDC will be looking for some sort of an appropriation, potentially one-time appropriation at least, that is not included in there. And then the funding for the Personnel Manual that we talked earlier is also not included in any of the information that we have that's been provided. From where I sit right now, with the exception of needing to finalize those last couple presentations in the, the smaller settings and finalizing the airport budget, I need to make a few tweaks to the best estimates based on the closed session that we had. And I would feel pretty confident presenting something to the board. I know that I have commissioners that were there for the MSUE portion of that, that will touch on that when you give each other a quick update here on what you've heard. I was assuming we were doing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I will not touch on that at all, but those are kind of the areas, in my head, we are not growing, we are trying to reinvest into our workforce, keep our benefit packages good, but that's something that I need to, you know, before I make a budget presentation to you, if you're going to want me to try to put something in there then, or leave some extra room for an EDC project, those are things that I would need to know as well. That being said, no matter what happens with our union contracts, we have to have a budget passed, a balanced budget passed on best estimates by the end of this year so that we can open on January 1 and expend money. So we will do the best we can to get there and I will get you more information as it comes at the next meeting. We'll have a, hopefully a more finalized idea.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Questions? So the few that I got to sit on did have some extra things that they wanted in their budget. And those have already been, you've already populated those and that's kind of there other than MSU, EDC, and the Personnel Manual.
That is correct.
The only three waiting.
That is correct. Yes.
Prosecutor's Office and all those that said, hey, I really could use X.
Yes.
Or, okay. And then a little fix for airport after that conversation.
No fix.
Okay. Does that have to, sorry?
Oh, you're good.
Does that have to do with the grants and the changes to that? Is that the adjustment?
Yes, that is the adjustment. So it was supposed to be the 100% funding, is I believe what they were telling us, and now there's got to be a small match portion.
Yes.
From the county. So that changes the appropriation that would need to be made from us as well, but we want to make sure we, based on the kind of conversation about that, we need to make sure that is there. And I honestly believe, I mean, I sit on the Airport Committee and I would like to see us do some rate increases next year, so I believe that may also play into, play into that as well.
Yeah, I.
Over the years, though, I don't mean to be jumping in, sitting on the Airport Committee, I've seen a lot of free stuff come our way. When I say free from grants and stuff, Eric's done a great job, you know, runways, fencing, lighting, and really proud of it.
And I can add too, from as I listen to the proposals and whatnot, I think incredibly frugal, does a lot, gets some other things for free, but it may be a point in time that all those hangers need to be accommodated for and not just used for cheap regular storage. That's my take. But, but I think there's a way to grow some revenue there because a lot of the other counties charge for a lot of things for those pilots to come in, and I don't think we're doing that. But I don't know that, I would just say it's worth investigating what else can be done for some revenue growth, especially when some, you can't control when the, the government goes, oh, I'm sorry, we lied, you have to contribute.
Right.
You know, you can't, can't protect that, but in those cases, you got to have enough money on the backend to cover some of that. So that's just some thoughts on my end.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe we need to generate some income there also.
Is there one other than Building and Grounds? Is there another department that needs, that's the only one I caught?
Animal Control.
Animal Control, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Net Department's doing very well with donations also.
They do. So our animal shelter actually does, does extremely well as far as people in Roscommon County love their animals.
Yep.
So that is a blessing, but they, they were hit with a big expense this year in having to redo that whole system for heating and ventilation. So that is, that is a big, that is a big hit for them.
So Commissioner, I'm just going to kind of go around and ask each commissioner if there's something within their budget presentations that other commissioners weren't there, if they need, would like to share anything that stood out or bring to attention?
They're all looking at me to start.
I always start to the right.
Rex, would you like to start?
I'll, Rex will start.
In the, in the meetings I had, most increases, other than we made a commitment to increase wages, most increases to departments were beyond their control or our control. It's just, it's a given. When, you know, I realize EDC and MSUE wanted some money, but we need to take care of our people first. And now the personnel policy expense may be, most cases, it was just, just beyond their control. It's either mandated. Now, I did see that the courts, in one case, it actually saved us some money. It was like $40,000 less expense than the year before, so that was good.
Mr. Morley? Now you're second.
I'm second. All right, good. I, I concur. For the few that I got to sit on, most of the increases really because we want to bring our staff up into some better wages. We need everybody to be as whole when it comes to benefits, union, non-union, like how does that work for us? Probably the biggest expense, but normally personnel is. I was very pleased with the amount of detail that I heard about each line item and why it's there. Many people were able to say, these are my staff, this is the, where they fit on the grade scale and whatnot. And that was helpful because just seeing one number, you go, what does that entail? So that, to me, was helpful. And overall, a really strong commitment to just keep their budget as lean as it could possibly be. And, you know, it, for the new person, I think when I go out and talk to people in the community who never trust how government handles money, it gave me a much better perspective on how does it work? What are our mandates? What are they can't control? And people being very cautious about what they think they can bring in and what they think they have to spend, almost to the point that we're few that went, I'm just going to keep it there. I hope I don't have to spend it, but it's probably going to be, I'm like, well, we should just put that in now if that's the case, take it away from something else that you're feeling you got a little cushion there, just anyway. I, I was just pleased how everybody did their presentation and came prepared to explain, especially for somebody who's new. So a little bit of things that they could control, maybe furniture, things we talked, I think chairs was the theme. Everybody's chairs are falling apart. I'm like, okay. Yeah, so, yeah. But those were some things from an infrastructure or just, you know, things you have to have just to function in your, your day-to-day office, I thought was pretty good, so.
Commissioner Milburn?
That has been said today, but my big takeaway is we want to invest in our workforce. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Russo?
You know, seeing on budget and for the last few years or whatever, we have to take care of our employees, you know? We have some really good employees and I don't want to lose them, you know, after we train them and do all that to another county or whatever, we, and we're, we're looking at it and we're trying and they deserve it. Thank you.
As far as the budget meetings that I sat on, I would agree with Commissioner Morley. I, I truly believe that the presentations, I learned a lot in the different line items, especially like in the Clerk's Office, there's only a certain amount she can charge for certain things. That's by statute. Doesn't matter whether she wants to charge more or not, it's by statute, she can only charge that. Same with the courts, the reimbursements that the courts can get. And, and then even for District Court, Danielle came in and she gave us a report of how many cases and what fields they entered into, so it gives you a better idea of how busy they actually are. And I agree that all of us have said that we want to do, we understand there's only one pot of money and we want to, I believe truly this year, try to get everybody where we can using that pot of money. For the last few years, you know, we've been investing in that general fund balance and getting it there. Now that it's there, we're not stocking as much away there. That gives us more wiggle room to get our employees to where they need to be.
Is that probably one of the reasons we have more money this year to try to work with is because we, I say pocketed, that might not be the right word, but we have that 18%. This isn't recorded, right? We didn't pocket that?
Board of Commissioners made a concise decision to increase the fund balance to a minimum of 18% per the recommendations. So yes, we were very, very frugal in other areas in order to ensure that not only do you, are you able to increase your fund balance, but if there are over expenditures in the budget, they're covered by the budget, so you're not taking it out of your fund balance. So yes, I mean, that is absolutely a large process.
One of the big pieces, a little bit of the taxable, some of the taxes coming in, but I think those are, in my mind, what I saw, the two biggest things that helped get us there now that we can do that and focus on how can we keep and retain our good staff.
Maybe one of these days we can put the heat on in here. It is.
I heard you guys. We're still learning.
We'll have electric heaters under our table next week.
So that's, I guess, there was no huge surprises for me in any of the budgets that were presented. I can share a little bit more about, because I did sit in on the Michigan State Extension. Basically, the request was to go back to, is it the 2022 or something like that, where they were funded? So the base assessment for Roscommon County would be $51,274. That's just the buy-in to get them to stay here. And then there is a part-time person up in Crawford County, so if you add that person from Crawford County and have them basically do their other half here, I want to say we're up around 88,795. And I honestly, I don't see where we can do that. They went for a millage, the public has spoken. As much as whether I agree or disagree with letting them come back, our employees are number one. And then the public has kind of spoken to us, and I think if we bring them back, what does that say?
We're going to lose faith in the public.
What I think what that says is you threatened us by doing a millage and you found money to do it anyway.
Right.
That does not fare well with a taxpayer, anybody in our community. It does happen and done, and that's why they don't trust that. So if it didn't pass, then we need to come up with ways that we can. Yeah, they did go with the dual approach and they did say that they'd be willing to do it, but they're not sure, one, if we would even allow them to do that, but two, the amount of work and time it takes to truly pass one of those, as Director knows in our road patrol, it takes a lot of work to educate, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are we putting in, what was it, like $1,900 worth of office space and phone for MSU?
So we do still, yes. So we, we pay for that office space, that heating, cooling, all of that for the MSUE office, and then we will also keep the, it's actually up like another 200, $2,500 for their fax and phone lines so that we can, I mean, essentially, we will have our forester type person that's on site, but yes.
And, and I believe that's sufficient, that's the way they've been operating?
That's what we have to do.
My darling said the public spoke on whether or not they wanted to expand that program.
Madam Chair? It was, if I understood it as well, currently today, Julie's taken on that role, right?
Yes.
She's, she's doing more than what is paid for, in a sense, out of a budget, and that, that just can't be sustainable for them and their program. So if we needed a part-time person or we needed somebody to be replaced, we would need to fund that.
Right.
If it's not done, it doesn't mean that the youth or the programs aren't offered, it's just not offered through us and here. They'll have to be in conjunction with Crawford or another county who's going to do that program.
That's, that's how I understood it too.
Yes, yes.
But essentially, it's not that because you live in Roscommon County, you can't participate in a 4H program, but you have to go participate in Crawford County or in Ogama County in order to put your kid into that program, so.
So let me ask a question, because I think one of the biggest that has a huge presence in our county is the ski program, cross-country ski program. They could still do things here, but their youth program, which they do quite a bit number-wise, would not be able to be housed there. Is that true?
That is correct, yes. Yeah, they will not offer any functions through the Roscommon County MSUE office for 4H activities.
I don't know about the numbers on the others, but that, that's a pretty good, how many of those are just Roscommon people or if they're coming from Crawford as well? Because it's the, I don't, I don't know if.
I don't either.
Yeah, I don't either, but.
You know, one time they used to do the basketball years ago, but they, that's been 10 years or so.
Maybe longer.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you say maybe longer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Been a while.
Twenty years ago.
You know, one time it was a really big thing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
When this topic come up about a year ago, it was intuient that three of his children participated in the cross-country ski and stuff.
Okay.
His comment was, yes, I like it. Am I willing to pay more money for it? No.
Okay.
And I think that's kind of what the public said in the vote, you know, so. I mean, everything has a value in a certain extent, it's just.
Yeah. I don't disagree. I was just trying to figure out the impact of that, not to say that we can afford a full-time person to do this, I get it. I'm just trying to think, okay, if, when we don't, what does that look like? And can they still get services somewhere? And if they can, then we have to work through that, you know?
And according to what Julie said, if they can, it's just not in Roscommon County, it's through one of our adjacent counties.
Or start a new program here. Nothing can be right in this area.
Yep. Is there anything else that we?
So for me, moving forward with next steps, I know that, you know, the two, the two biggest factors for the board in getting these department head budgets in and getting them inputted. We. and getting them inputted was, will this wage and salary recommendation and fully funded HSA benefits fit? And with how everything is capped right now, with the exception of those couple, few small caveats, I'm pretty confident that it will. So, looking at that, I will also get with the members of the personnel committee and maybe have a little decision about which way, like how much percentage we think we want to buffer into those budgets to add in, so that I can bring you back those, that final idea. We have those last couple department head meetings that we will schedule. We will get together, I will get together a list of what motions would end up being entailed. Like what are those individual steps of that budget that the board needs to make sure that you understand in order to pass those and pass the budget? Of course, biggest ones. A portion of that will be the Public Act 152, which is where you decide if you're going to do hard cap and 80/20 or opt out and do something different, which we are built in right now for the 5%. So, that is built into the budget. The other portion of that would be obviously adopting a new wage scale as proposed, so that then that could be finalized for it. So, and then the additional appropriations that would be included. So, does that be a what, like 16, Michelle? 16 motions you have to read?
Sometimes more.
Yeah, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since a lot of this is wages and that continues forever, whatever we do with a budget must be sustainable beyond next year. I'm saying?
Okay.
I mean, it's, this, what we do with this budget is going to have a reflection on the following years also. And we must keep that in mind. You don't have to.
Any other comments, questions? Motions and resolutions? We have none, so we are at public comment.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Mary Beebe, obviously, Judge Beebe from District Court. I mainly just wanted to thank everyone. I wanted to thank everyone that was part of the Wage and Salary Committee and took the time to work on that and recognition of the needs of our employees. As a department that has had to hire recently, I know how difficult it is to find new employees based on our current scale. So, that increase, especially for that level one to six initially, and then the, then the cost of living is going to be a huge thing, trying to get good employees in and to continue to keep the ones that we have, which we have and are truly blessed with a lot of great employees. I want to thank the board for taking the time to sit in the budget meetings and listen, see the work that everybody does. I think we really do, are fortunate to have offices that really do want to stay as close as they can in their budgets and, you know, tweak where they can to save, aren't overspending. So, I'm glad that, to hear that everybody seems to be recognizing that. And especially with the insurance, you know, I know everybody realizes that this insurance change was a tough year for everybody. So, knowing that we really can't change that, and I appreciate Jody taking the time to also get those, those lines to really say that this is what we have and can do, because it really helped our people see as well. So, knowing that we're really, in my mind anyways, doing any change right now would not be a good thing. Having that increase in their pay is going to help those additional costs that they've seen with Blue Care Network right now. And so, I just wanted to thank everybody for that and the hard work that they're doing and taking the time to listen to the departments and really the, seeing that focus on our employees, which I, I feel is just so, so important. So, other than that, thank you very, very much, all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
Okay, Michelle Stevenson, county clerk. I just want to echo what Judge Beebe said. I do want to thank the commissioners and Jody for all of your work in meeting with the elected officials and helping us to, to provide a better understanding of the insurance options and, you know, really where we're at and provide that buy-up option, whether or not anybody participates in it or not. But to be able to, you know, potentially offer something to maybe help. I wish that orthodontic stuff was around several years ago, but, you know, that's all right. But I do appreciate it. I know sometimes it gets a little heated when we do budget times. And so, just thank you for, for trying to work with us and actually hearing, hearing what was being said.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Board comment? Rex? Ms. Milburn?
No.
Ms. Russo?
We already did it.
Ms. Morley?
Okay, I will say thank you to the people, I said it earlier. But I would love feedback on how that process went. To help, let's, if it was a good thing we did that this year and you guys felt like you were heard and listened and we understand better, if there's a better way to do that.
Because every year, I mean, I don't want to make it change every year and create chaos. But if there's things that could have done better or whatnot, then, or it's all the same. I was just pleased that it, that we were allowed to be a part of it, so thanks.
I think it worked out well for the most part. And I do, I thank everyone for taking the time to come down and educate some of us that needed a little more education than others.
All right, with no further board comment, this meeting is adjourned.